Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee back in session. City Council Ordinance 23-0381. Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. Excuse the periodic breaks in speaking, I just caught the hiccups. Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee. To my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee. Councilman John Bullock, 9th District. Staff to the Committee. To my immediate right, Marguerite Kern. We have Representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott’s office and Council President Nick Mosby’s office. We’re here for planning. And we have CHAP with us. We had the last half hour of this session, colleagues, so we’re going 12:30 to 2:30 on planning, and then CHAP at 2:30 PM. And then we have Moat at 3:00 PM. Director Ryer, how many slides do you have in your deck?
Just four or five. It’ll be very quick.
How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
Five or 10 minutes.
Perfect. Before you begin, a couple of quick housekeeping rules. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent, off, vibrate, or some other setting that does not make noise. For those of you that are testifying that have not before with the new technology, please press the button on the right of your dashboard. It looks like the little Lego character with the Wi-Fi symbol next to their head. Your light will turn on red, and the ring up here at the top will turn on red. When you’re finished speaking, please be sure to turn it off. These microphones are very sensitive. They will catch whispering, breathing, sniffling, et cetera. Director, before you begin, could you please introduce everyone on your senior team that’s here to testify, include first, last name, as well as position, title, and then take it away? Thank you.
Certainly. My name is Chris Ram, the Director of Planning for the City of Baltimore. To my immediate left is Nicole Stewart, Assistant Director for the Department of Planning, and then Stephanie Smith, also Assistant Director of the Department of Planning. And then we have a number of our Division Chiefs. In fact, we have all of them except for the Director of the Office of Sustainability, who’s out of town today. Chad Hayes is the Director of Community Planning and Revitalization. Taylor LeFevre is Director of Food Policy and Planning. Sarah Parnellum, Data Policy and Data Analysis. And Eric Tiso is in the back. We also have our new CFO, Mira Green here, as well as Kim Knox, who is part of working on our Green Network Plan. I think I have everybody. Be quick on the slides. There’s not a lot different this year in our operating budget. We were asked to name two goals for Fiscal Year 24 Overview. We chose to substantially complete the Comprehensive Plan, which was in last year’s budget, not in this year’s budget, by the end of this fiscal year. And the second goal we chose, which I know you all have been interested in, is sort of looking at the mismatch between deferred maintenance and other capital costs and the resources of the capital budget. The extreme mismatch between the supply and need there. There could have been others. We’re launching our Middle Neighborhood Strategy this year. To the point about capital resources, we’re working very closely with DGS on the city’s real estate portfolio. And, you know, we assist with coordination of the disposition of surplus schools. It’s not for the school system. They turn them over to the city once they have cleared them out. The services, we have, let me back up. We have five services in the Department. 761 oversees development, oversight and support. 762 is CHAP. I’ll touch on that, even though we’ll come back at the end. 763 is Policy and Data Analysis and the Community Planning Division. And 765, 765 is the Office of Sustainability, which includes food policy and then the Administration Again, not a lot of changes. We have worked with OPR and BBMR to refine our performance measures. You may remember last time, the problems with the permit system really interfered with our ability to measure that work. These two items are something that we control. In other words, we can control the measurement of them. One is subdivision reviews, which is entirely a provision of the Planning Commission. And then we also provide recommendations to the BMZA for their hearings. I did, I should mention in this one that we have received a grant from the State of Maryland to provide a new master plan for the former, or existing state center complex, as you know, that will be empty of state agencies approximately 12 months from now. We are working to identify a consultant to oversee that process. I will also add that, working with MOGR this year, we submitted a request for $49 million. Forty-one million was for demolition estimates of the state center site, and the other eight million was for management of the site during the interim period until it’s redeveloped. Both of those were provided by our own Department of General Services. Next slide is Service 762. It’s CHAP Historic Preservations. Nothing is really changing here. The two performance measures we’re working with are number of ATPs, we call them, Authorization to Proceed, and the number of preliminary reviews for the tax credit, for the CHAP Tax Credit Application. We’ll come back to that, I believe, at 2:00 or 2:30. Third, Service 763 is a big one. This is where the entire Community Planning and Revitalization Division sits. They, as you know, their permit responsibilities are urban renewal plans. One of the performance measures looks at that. We had some issues with lack of referrals. And in other words, the permit system would not refer a permit to the proper planner, and delays would happen. And we wouldn’t know until somebody complained. So we’ve been working with HCD to expedite that as much as possible. And our team is also working closely with the HCD team on the new permit process, to make sure that we minimize potential glitches in the new permit system. Also, Policy and Data Analysis is in this division, so all your map requests come through here. Other data analysis come through here. You may have used the service yourself. The capital budget also sits in this service, and we’ve done that, we did a presentation on the capital budget last week. Next service. There we go. 765 is the Office of Sustainability. I’m very sorry, Avery Richardson couldn’t be here today. This is actually our second newest division now. The Office of Food Policy and Planning came out of the Office of Sustainability. It’s a relatively new entity. It was created in 2008. It supports the Sustainability Commission, of which you have a member. And it’s a very dynamic organization that has incubated a number of new initiatives in the city. I would point to Camp Small and Department of Recreation and Parks. I would point to the MAID in Baltimore Program as examples, and as well as our very own Food Policy Program. All three of those were created by the sort of entrepreneurial spirit of the Office of Sustainability. You’ll see in this, it includes $250,000 in unallocated funding. We watch both the federal and state grant opportunities very carefully for this. We have a $7 million application now into FEMA to support Resiliency Hubs. And again, that’s a program that was incubated in the Office of Sustainability, and we’re probably one of the leading cities in the country on this resilience. I think we almost created the idea. So these are community-based organizations that assist after natural or man-made disasters. So we’re not counting our chickens before they hatch, but we’re certainly feeling very optimistic about the FEMA, the FEMA grant application. Finally, Administration, that’s us right here. We have a very lean machine. We struggled during COVID. We had a big turnover, and we’re very proud that we have almost completely filled all those positions. Some of the administrative positions were left until last. We wanted our community planners to be first in that process, but a year ago, we brought on Nicole Stewart. She’s been fiscal manager, HR manager, everything else in her short time here. But we’re finally staffed up with Mira Green, our new Finance Director, and LeAnn Reese is our Department of HR, Human Resources. We have a couple clerical position and an assistant financial position still left, but we should be filling those shortly. And that’s the end of my presentation. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director. We’ve also been joined by Councilman Isaac Itzy Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee; Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee; Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. Councilman Bullock, you’re up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Ryer and your team, for being here. I think it’s quite fitting that your last slide was around equitable neighborhood development, because one of the kudos that I wanted to give you and the department is really around your community planners. We’re fortunate to have some folks who are really dedicated to the city. And so I know in previous sessions, you talked about wanting your planners to be more proactive and problem-solving and being engaged within communities, so definitely wanted to sing your praises around that. To that end, though, did want to get deeper into this middle neighborhood strategy. I know a lot of our districts, again, that’s been a critical point in terms of trying to right-size the city, and that we’ve lost some population from some neighborhoods, and so it’s a very critical piece. So if you and your team could talk about that, I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, great question. Thank you. We have been sort of assembling a new middle neighborhood strategy, probably for three years. What’s different now is that we received some recovery funding, so we’re actually able to launch it. It has four components, I think I would say. We have a partnership with Healthy Neighborhoods, Inc., which was the original middle neighborhood nonprofit entity for the City of Baltimore. We have a second initiative with Live Baltimore, which is essentially a rental conversion program targeted towards certain neighborhoods. And then we have a partnership with DHCD around two items, but home repairs for legacy homeowners. We also have some development incentives around Inspire Schools. And then finally, our favorite piece, but unfortunately small, is we will be able to provide operating support for three or four partners, maybe five, with the cooperation of Healthy Neighborhoods. We’re also looking at some local impact aid funding to spread the money further. So we may get to five or six even neighborhood areas. They’re typically a cluster of three or four neighborhoods that fall into our middle neighborhood priorities. What are they? So you may remember from the mayor’s action plan, the whole issue of population loss. When you look at population loss in Baltimore City, it’s been around the decline in immigration, which was directly related to the federal situation, and to an outflow of Black middle-class residents. There’s a number of studies around here. We know generally, those folks are going into three areas. One into northeast Baltimore, that’s our success story, but another third to Baltimore County, and another third to Anarundel County. So we’ve mapped that and incorporated that into our middle neighborhood strategy. That’s the new step we are taking. So you will see that our attempt is to look at neighborhoods where we’re losing, middle neighborhoods where we’re losing population, and trying to double down with this ARPA request. I won’t lie and say this is funded indefinitely. It’s funded for three years. But we have the components, the tools that HCD is providing, the program Live Baltimore is providing. As you may or may not know, there’s no new leadership at Healthy Neighborhoods, and we’re kind of turning that organization inside out, myself and the Commissioner on the board of that. And then we have the ARPA funding through the Planning Department to support a handful of neighborhood partners for community organizing, block projects, those trainings, those kinds of things. So that’s the status of it.
And then what’s the level of funding for the recovery funds for middle neighborhoods?
For what?
You mentioned the recovery funds you have.
Yeah. It totals, I don’t have the breakdown in front of me, it totals close to $10 million, nine and a half million dollars spread among those four organizations. Sure.
Vice President Milton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment in the question. When you were talking about the Sustainability Commission, I was just kind of reminiscing deceased now Beth Strowman, which really kind of was, really kicked that off along with former Councilman Jim Kraft. And then I kind of moved in for a while representing the council, and I think the representative is still Councilman Dorsey. Are you still the representative on Sustainability?
I’m Porter.
Oh, Porter, okay. Okay. But anyway, I’m just watching how that office has really grown and is known kind of nationally for a number of the initiatives that, you know, you continue to do, so I thank you for that.
Yes, ma’am. We’re very proud of it.
One of my questions, how does the Planning Department assess new development on things like traffic congestion, public transportation, and parking availability? I know we have, you know, the Parking Authority and the Transportation Department that are specific, but in the planning of new developments, how do you play a role in assisting with that?
Yeah, good question. So first and foremost, I don’t, I won’t say we administer the zoning code, but we wrote it. So we know the zoning code better than any other agency. As you know, the interpretation of it lies with Jeff Veal’s shop, and the variance part of it lies with the BMZA. But all the other zoning actions, for example, a rezoning bill would come through the Planning Commission, who would make a recommendation to you all. That’s number one. Number two, I think we have a series of services we offer through 761, whether it be a pre-development meeting or a site plan review meeting, where we pull together the relevant agencies for a development project. And it’s a service, it’s a free service to the development community, where we try to identify whatever issues they may have with the city’s process, and get them, like, on the right track towards resolving those issues. And the ones you mentioned are often some of those kinds of issues that’ll come up either in the pre-development meeting or the site plan review meeting. And we have a third level, much more complicated, I guess, called the Design Review Process, UDAP, is what people refer to. It’s less focused on those kinds of issues and more on very general design issues. So those are probably the three pillars, but 761, that service staffs the Planning Commission. That’s what they do. So we try to expedite projects as much as possible. We try to be as transparent as possible. We’ll add that all the community planners are part of the process of communicating with the neighborhoods if there’s something going on that affects their neighborhood. So I think we have a pretty robust process, but we also try to be as quick as possible. We are at a disadvantage with surrounding jurisdictions because of our tax rate, so we try to be very transparent and predictable in our development process to make up for that.
I bring that up because, too, because I know we have started to have some intense problems. We’ve had in-depth conversations with BMZA, I think it was yesterday, and I’m sure there’s council members that are going to kind of hone in onto that, but we’re starting to foresee some problems.
With the variance issue.
Yes.
Familiar with it, yeah.
That I think are coming up because of us really not going in depth when we did the Transform Baltimore.
Yeah.
And I think Councilman Costello and I and the President were the only ones that are really involved in that Transform Baltimore, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, thank you for that. We’re definitely ready, willing, and able to help. You may remember, Transform took a long time to pass, and part of that was we were dealing with deferred issues that had been deferred 20 or 30 years. So working with Chief Tiso’s shop, we’ve committed to an annual review. And so we’re looking to provide many small updates to the zoning code rather than wait five years and having this gigantic bill. That means we will try to put together issues where there’s a consensus or close to a consensus, put aside the more contentious issues, and take more time to work on those. But I would hope to be able to send you a zoning tweak update bill every year from here on out.
Oh, thank you. That’s a good idea. I’ll stop there, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have no idea what the Vice President is talking about. I’ve intentionally deleted that entire experience of Transform from my hard drive. Councilman Schleifer.
Director, you’re coming up on five years as the Director of Planning. During your confirmation hearing, or the executive appointments hearing, almost five years ago, I had asked you how you plan to measure the success of your office under your leadership, and your response was that you want to improve the quality of life for the people that live in the city. And I asked you how you plan to measure that, and you said that you will take a survey when you get started, and then you’ll also take a survey again each year, and especially five years, because we were talking about a metric of five years, and that that survey will determine whether or not people feel like their quality of life has been improved by the services of the Planning Department under your leadership. So did you do that initial survey to see what people thought about the city and their communities?
So we haven’t done a quality of life survey. It’s not quite five years yet. It feels like it’s 10, but it’s a little over four at this point. I will say that this should be no surprise to this body, but the most frequent complaint I and our team hears from the public is that the left hand and the right hand aren’t talking to each other. And I think that’s on all of us. But to the extent where we can assist with that, and more specifically where the Community Planning Division, which has been bolstered, and there are two new planners coming for Western and Southwestern, that they are, I don’t know, I can’t, they are an incredible bunch of people. They really are. And we’ve had turnover there, and we’ve hired some really good people in that division. And I think we’re the only agency with that depth and level of commitment to communities and community planning in Baltimore. With the skill set and the education that our folks have, I don’t think any other agency can rival that. That division is almost 15 people now, all with master’s degrees, all with experience, all out in the neighborhoods, you know, week after week.
So that had nothing to do with my question. I mean, I do agree with that tangent that you do have some great and talented employees. I do appreciate the work of our local planners. But my question was regarding you and your leadership over an agency that is responsible for the direction of billions of dollars of how capital dollars are spent. And one of the key metrics is about population decline. You just said that, but you told us, you told this committee, this council, when you got started, that that’s how you were going to measure it. So being that you didn’t do what you said you would do, how are you measuring your If you’re not doing it that way, what way are you doing it so we know if we’re getting our money’s worth for the billions of dollars that you’re directing?
Again, I would, I guess I would argue that a survey would not be a very meaningful exercise.
I agree, when I shared that with you four and a half years ago.
So what we are doing that I think all of you are aware of is the, every 10 years, we complete a comprehensive plan. It’s a requirement of the state. It begins after every census. And we are about a year into the comprehensive planning process, and it has entailed an extensive outreach, an outreach component, which Sarah Parnellum can go to in depth. But I think that will be a much more useful tool for finding out where Baltimore citizens are satisfied and dissatisfied, and where they would like us to go in terms of the city for the next 10 years.
So now the goalposts moved from the five years that we discussed to now this 10 years. And again, I’m trying to understand- And again, I'm trying to understand on a budget that we're being asked to vote on in the next week, why you should be getting 18 and a half million dollars to run this department that is responsible for the direction of how billions of dollars are spent over these years. And you are not sharing with me how you are measuring that success. So is there some other metric? Because the metric I tend to look at, and I shared this with you four and a half years ago, I just rewatched the hearing, was that I felt the population decline was a big issue. I shared that with you in multiple occasions. It's still an issue and it still continues to decline. The Planning Department is one area that I think can have the greatest impact on reversing that decline. And so again, I'll ask like, what are you doing to reverse population decline? And what, have you not done anything to measure the performance or success of the agency as a whole over your past four and a half years? I mean, I know individual employees do great work and work very hard and do their jobs at a very high level. But I'm not talking about any individual employee here. I'm talking exclusively about the leader of this agency, which is you. And you told me you were going to do something four and a half years ago. You just told me that you didn't do it. And so I'm just asking you, as under your leadership, what are the taxpayers supposed to expect from you to see that you directing billions of dollars' worth of their money is going to the right causes and is going to have any return on investment?
Well, thank you for that question. As I said, I think we found a better way to get citizens' input on the city's direction and use the comprehensive plan as an example of that. With regard to population loss, I cited the example of the middle neighborhood strategy, which is specifically targeted to that issue. Quite certain it will not be enough. But it is the most recent initiative of the department to directly address population loss. Our capital budgeting process, which we've already been over with this body, is a very rigorous process. And it has to be a very rigorous process because we have approximately $1 for every $10's worth of needs. So until we figure out a way to finance a capital budget to an extent that other cities finance a capital budget, we will always be in a position of only being able to fund the most urgent needs that the agencies express for their capital budget.
I don't see why we would give any, why would we be investing?
Councilman, he answered the question. And we, I think it's time that we can move on to the next person and then you can come back.
Sure.
Just because of our timeframe. Thank you. Councilman Burnett, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we talk about, I know this comes up a lot, but happy to bring it up again. The, so there's an allocation for healthy food priority, healthy food priority areas. And considering the amount of food insecurity and lack of access to fresh foods that many of our residents experience, can you speak to, you know, the role that the Planning Department has? I know that there's a Healthy Food Priority Work Group. I don't think that's the actual name, but there's a group of folks, partners, that are all working together on this. Can you speak to the Planning Department's role in that work group? And I guess sort of build out, I guess, like the larger ecosystem to better connect residents to healthy food options in Baltimore?
Yeah, good question. Thank you. So before I turn it over to our Food Policy and Planning Director, just want to reiterate two big points. One is that this unit turned on a dime during the pandemic and created a really awesome distribution system. But then they followed up with a pretty significant 11 and a half million dollar ARPA application, which has five components to it. I'm going to let the Director speak to it. But one of the most interesting components, one of the five, is sort of a medical prescription for food. And some of you may remember back in the Obama administration, there was a lot of conversation around that and housing because they measure the federal health budget in trillions and the HUD budget in billions. So we're applying this in a test way, a pilot way. I believe it's with MedStar as part of our ARPA allocation. But I'll let Taylor LeFave fill you in on the five components of that.
Sure, and thank you for the question. I would say maybe to go back to your original question first. My team, the Food Policy and Planning Division, manages the Baltimore Food Policy Initiative. And that is a three-tiered effort to build an equitable and resilient urban food system. And the three tiers of that are our Food Policy Action Coalition, which is a body that's been around for over a decade now. And we, since the pandemic, have added a lot of folks to it. There's currently over 800 folks that are a part of that group. We describe it as anyone who is working on or affected by the city's food system is welcome to join. And we meet quarterly to provide updates on what we're doing. But we also work with over 20 agencies across the city, so many other city agencies. Folks from the state and nonprofit partners give updates. And then it's also a space to work on policy issues and to get direct feedback from folks on our work. And the other two parts of that are our Resident Food Equity Advisors, which we've had four cohorts of in the past. And that is now, we were the first in the country to do that model where we meet with residents for a six-month period of time and they're compensated for their time. And that culminates in a list of recommendations and things for the city to implement that's presented to the mayor. That now has been replicated by other cities. And then perhaps also a part of what you were referring to in your question is as a result of that, after the first couple cohorts, we were ending up with this great list of recommendations that everyone supported, but there wasn't any direct funding to implement them. And our team at the time had no funding, you know, other than just for staff. So that resulted in the Healthy Food Priority Area Funds, which is, you know, roughly $140,000, $150,000 that each year we distribute to nonprofit partners across the city that are doing really great food access work. This past year, we distributed it to two different urban farms. And we also look to leverage funding. For instance, two years ago, we gave a $19,000 grant to the Farm Alliance of Baltimore because they needed matching funds. But that $19,000 leveraged a $250,000 USDA grant for their work. And then, yeah, as Chris mentioned, 2020 to 2022, we managed the city's COVID-19 emergency food response, where we distributed approximately 180 million servings of fresh fruits and vegetables to residents in healthy food priority areas. And that work led us into our ARPA application. Those five tiers, I can just go over them real quickly, are to continue the produce box distribution program through 2024, to, as Chris mentioned, fund a pilot food as medicine program at MedStar Harbor Hospital, to significantly increase the amount of funding for the next few farmers market seasons, for farmers market nutrition incentives, and to convert the token system. As you may know, at the farmers markets are generally a physical token. We have funding to convert for several of the markets to an electronic system. Another pillar is to, we've granted $1.5 million to the Farm Alliance of Baltimore's Black Butterfly Urban Farmer Training Academy. And we also work to secure a 15-year lease for them in Farring Bay Brook Park on seven acres of underutilized parkland. We're really excited about that. That is the first lease that Wreckin Parks has ever given out for an urban agriculture project. It's the longest lease the city has given out in general for an urban agriculture project. And to our knowledge and in conversations with food policy directors across the country, it's one of the longest leases any city has given out for an urban agriculture project. And then I think I'm forgetting one pillar, just a second. Oh, and the last one is the one that's the most kind of work for us is that we're really excited that after 10 years of advocacy, right around the beginning of the pandemic in 2020, online SNAP was finally allowed by the federal government in Maryland. So this allows anyone who is on SNAP, also known as food stamps, to purchase food off, online and have it directly delivered to their homes. So we have a significant amount of funding for nutrition incentive program that we're managing for online SNAP. So this allows residents to get additional funding or money specifically to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables on the platform. But there's also still a lot of folks that don't even know that online SNAP is a thing. So we have funding for marketing and outreach just to make folks aware.
It's a quick follow-up. So the budget item for this was $267,000. Is that all under one, all of that under one $200,000 allocation? I mean, that's pretty efficient and effective.
I'm sorry, what's the question again?
So the budget book has it for $200,000, $267,000 allocation? Is that the full budget for this?
Good question. So the...
He has not exacted, no, okay. I was like, wow, this is a lot of work for...
Yeah. No, but what falls under that is the, you know, the breakdown isn't here, but it's about $150,000 of the Healthy Food Priority Area Funds that go, you know, that we distribute. And then also what falls under that is like my division's, you know, professional development, printing, the simple office expenditures, and then food and materials for the Resident Food Equity Advisors Program. And then the other work that we spoke to is all, you know, separate. It's $11 million of ARPA funding.
Oh, most of it's from ARPA, okay.
Yep.
I was like, wow, you've scaled up significantly for $200,000. I wish all the other agencies could be that efficient. Okay, that, you've answered follow-ups as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. or Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Dorsey stepped away. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. I was wondering on pages, there's a couple of pages in the budget book where it's very clearly mentioned, I'm on page 211, "Average number of days for basic permit review increased to five days due to delays in reviewing permits from ongoing challenges with the permit system." And you mentioned this in a couple of other services. Excuse me, can you be a little bit more specific as to what are the problems you're having with the permit office or permit process?
Our, the permits that are referred to us in urban renewal areas are referred to the community planners. They have three days to turn it around. But the glitches in the system sometimes meant that we didn't get the referral. And so we didn't know that we didn't get the referral. And we don't know until somebody complains. So then somebody calls us and they're 60 days into the permit and wondering what the heck is going on. And we don't, we don't have it. So, you know, we can then turn it around in three days. But those are the kinds of glitches that we've had. And I'm certainly hoping that the new permit system will fix that kind of thing.
So when somebody applies for a permit, your office is supposed to be referred that application to be able to look at it, to see if it fits in, qualifies, if it's in an area where there's like an urban renewal plan or a CHAP district or something like that, right? So you're saying there are times where you do not get those?
Correct.
And then somebody complains or somebody from my district in particular complains about, you know, the fact that they didn't follow the URP and all of that.
Right, and they might call you all at that point.
They do call us, by the way.
Planning Department's holding it up. And we're like, it's not in our system. We don't have it. So, I mean, it really, unfortunately, it's the complaint that generates the fix. If no one complains, we don't even know it's happening.
Yeah, but then if the person does the work and then it's still not compliant with the URP, what happens? Because it's not complying with the URP because they didn't know that they had to comply with the URP.
If, if the permit does not comply with the URP...
If the work that is done because you never got it, to say that there was a...
If they go ahead and do the work without the permit? Well, that's, you know...
Well, they go ahead and do the work, right? But you never got it to see whether or not it fit within the URP. So they're just going to do the work. And their work may not fit with the URP.
I see that Eric Tiso would like to comment.
That's a good idea.
Sorry, I can maybe help. So there's two different things that are going on here. So the first one that Director was talking about is where a referral was made in the system, but it doesn't show up in the queue for the particular planner in our shop. So they don't see it, they don't know it's there, but technically they're assigned and the clock is running. So that's problem one. When they call to complain and say, hey, it's been X amount of time, several weeks, and I would always encourage people to call sooner than that. When they say, okay, what's your permit number? And they hard search for that permit number, they can find it. Oh, hey, there it is. Now I can interact with it, do what I need to do, and keep them moving. Second problem is, I think your question is if the permit is not referred, if there's a missing referral, because sometimes that happens too, then it's issued in error. And if we find out about it, it has to go through enforcement. We have to ask for the permit to be revoked. And that's the worst eventuality because somebody might have done something that has to be undone. And so the permit system is a very complex thing that involves a lot of loops of different people. So the Department of Planning's portion of that, I've requiem, he is our permit manager in my team. He's kind of the switchboard for the things that come to planning. Some things come direct, some things don't. So there's a lot of hands that touch a lot of permits. Yes. Yeah, they have been working on a new system for quite some time. That started last year. I know we've been involved in with that. They have surveyed all the different stakeholders across the various agencies that are participating in the permit system to try and find out what is everybody's ask. So that when they talk to a vendor, they can try and build the thing the one time. Because again, when this first came in, everything was on paper back a long time ago when I started. No snickering, it's not nice, whoever that was. You know, the guy who was tasked to run around to the different agencies to build the multi-dimensional spreadsheet of all of the potential options, if you're in this, if you're in that, if you have this. It drove the permit system to its knees. So part of it is just the complexity of our system. But yes, I know that housing is absolutely working on it.
Great, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was in the loop because we've had extensive conversations in this room in the last few days about the permit office and what has to be done. So we're hoping that everything gets, the Commissioner said something about spring of next year, which I think is too long. So hopefully, we can move it along.
And it may be part of the problem of if you can't have the permit system that you need, get the one you can afford?
Well, if that is actually the case, the city administrator is here, then, you know, we need a permit system that's actually going to work and not just because it's a one that we can, you know what I mean? Like, we, that's just, we'll follow up on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, Director. I was curious for the capital improvement plan process. One of the things this council passed unanimously, I believe, last year was a commitment to net zero city operations, which would require that we reduce our... which would require that we reduce our greenhouse gas footprint coming from all of our operations. We're talking vehicles-
Could you speak up a little bit?
Oh, I always have that problem, forgive me. One of the things this council committed to, I believe it was last year, the bill that I introduced, was to reduce the city's net greenhouse gas footprint to net zero for city operations. And for the capital improvement plan, I'm really curious, do we factor in at all our carbon footprint and our footprint more generally in our plans? Or how do we do that is probably more notable.
Yeah, good question. Stephanie Smith is going to sit in for our Director of Sustainability, but the environment is one of the criteria for evaluating capital projects, if you want to elaborate.
Thank you. Okay, great, you can hear me. So yeah, thank you for that question. So as you noted, it is one of the criteria that we look at for the capital budget, but it's obviously not the, the single driver. But we are trying to coordinate within our agency these conversations, particularly led by our Sustainability Director, Ava Richardson, who apologizes that she cannot be here today. But the Climate Action Plan that we will be finalizing by the end of this year, which was kind of on a good parallel path with your bill in terms of, you know, it should be finalized in December of 2023, it's really going to be driving our internal considerations around reaching those net neutrality goals. So I wanted to assure you that we're really in the documenting and drafting phase for public comment because all of that engagement has happened. And so we would welcome, you know, even close inspection and feedback from you as we get those initial drafts out, probably by early fall.
Absolutely, I'd be more than happy to provide any additional feedback that my team can share. Can I add a follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To that end, I was looking through the, the budget and in the books under the percentage of Baltimore Sustainability Plans initiated and the percentage of Climate Action Plan Recommendations completed. I was kind of curious how those metrics are pulled together because, give me one second, the targets seem low, in fact, lower than the actual, and don't really give us a good sense of progress made. So, so for example, the percentage of Climate Action Plan Recommendations Completed, the actual was 6%, 6%, 6% in 2020, 6% in 2021, 3% in '22, 6% in '22, and we're targeting 3% in 2023. How many percentage points are we at? Where are we in implementing that plan? And it's probably-
All right, I'm going to hand it to Stephanie also, but I just want to point out the Sustainability Plan is this sort of massive document with its own rhythm. Some years are faster than others. And also to point out that a year ago, year and a half ago, the administration created a Sustainability Subcabinet, which is sort of an internal body that focuses all the relevant agencies on the goals of the Sustainability Plan. So that's been incorporated into our implementation process. Stephanie, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. So actually, that's where I was going to begin. As you can see, those increments are pretty modest, and that's not how we're going to achieve the implementation of the 2019 Sustainability Plan update, consistent with even the goals that'll come out of the Climate Action Plan and some of the statewide goals that we're supposed to adhere to. So one of the things that we thought was important to kind of get various stakeholders that are actually the primary implementers, because we aren't the primary implementers for many facets of the plan, together is to bring together the Sustainability Subcabinet. And so it's really knitting together those who have sustainability-focused roles within various agencies into work groups that have targeted focuses. So for example, there's a work group just focused on buildings itself, which is really akin to some of the things you were mentioning earlier. There's also flooding, heat, and you may be aware of some of that. And so that is going to help us drive action among our partners that we don't always have proximate, you know, you know-
Direct control.
-direct control over.
Yes.
But also I think it helps those stakeholders to feel less isolated because this work is but one of many programmatic responsibilities they may have in their job, but to feel that they have colleagues around the issues of sustainability writ large, I think is also making people feel less professionally isolated. And I also want to lift up that what we're also thinking about moving towards with the Sustainability Commission is that much of the Commission's life was focused on first launching the initial Sustainability Plan, and then the, the year subsequent to that, updating the, and leading to the finalization of the 2019 Plan. And right now, we feel like the best use and the highest use of the Commission moving forward is to maybe move into a more of an oversight role, where they're really digesting on a monthly basis various parts of the plan so that we can have a more coherent, not just internal, but public conversation around implementation in real time, too. So I wanted to lift that up for you as well.
I appreciate that, thank you. And just a suggestion, I, I wonder if, between you guys in finance, we could look at that metric and maybe make it into a cumulative metric instead, which would tell us where we are.
Councilmember, if I can just add, in, we can definitely look into that.
Okay.
I believe in fiscal 2022, and Director, you might recall this, that there was a recommendation from audits about going from cumulative to annual performance, so we can dig into that more to figure out with audits how we would-
Okay.
...address that. But we were doing cumulative, and then they suggested that we switched to the annual. So, but as we go into the agency performance plans with O P I, I'm sure that's something that they can review more.
Okay, but more than happy to have that conversation after. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Mr. Director, I wanted to kind of really follow the line of questioning from Councilman Conway related to planning for a sustainable Baltimore. As member of the Sustainability Commission for the council, I'm a little bit concerned about performance measure number one, the percentage of Baltimore Sustainability Plans Strategy Initiated, and the FY '24 target is 5%. Why is that?
I'm going to defer to Stephanie, but I believe, I mean, we are, this year, we are tackling two very large projects. One is the Climate Action Plan Update, and the other is the Disaster Preparedness Update that FEMA requires every five years. So those are unusually large endeavors for the Office of Sustainability and probably equal to 10 other initiatives in the Sustainability Plan.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add, yeah, those are things that were time-bound and we had to honor finalizing them, you know, consistent with various laws, but they will also unlock some cooperation-
Perfect, okay.
-you know, from various levels of government to execute and implement parts of the plan moving forward in concert with the Sustainability Subcabinet.
Perfect, okay, okay, that makes a lot of sense. I was just a little bit confused when I read that. Also want to, my next line of questioning has to do with the Food Policy and Planning Division. From my understanding, B D C funds a position for food sustainability and food policy, is that true?
I don't remember the budget year, but I guess it's four years ago, we transferred $100,000 from the Food Policy Office to B D C for, we'll call it like an implementation That person has since left.
Okay.
I don't know how that's been replaced.
Okay. Is it possible that the Department of Planning can coordinate a briefing kind of with Councilman Conway? I assume you want to be on that briefing as well, and maybe Councilman Burnett, about the, about that position, particularly the food policy issues and the food strategy across the city? I think that would really be helpful. As we live in kind of like this food desert situation, there is lack of coordination and knowledge and just kind of foresight into the food policy. And if we are funding that and that has gone, transferred officially over to B D C, we need a report out of what that person is doing or what that strategy entails for our districts as well. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to actually make that a formal committee request. Thank you.
And I think it would be a good idea as well to, maybe if you can block that out, to brief the whole council at one of their luncheons, because we all have those problems within all of our districts. So, and a lot of times the luncheon is a good format to get everybody at once.
I'd point out entirely different subject, but we did the same thing with the Made in Baltimore program.
Yes, yes, yes.
Right, right. So I'm, Bullock has stepped away for a minute, so I'm next. And my question, how does CHAP work with other city agencies and stakeholders to balance preservation goals with the need for economic development and growth? And are there any financial incentives or grants available to support preservation and restoration of historic structures in communities?
Great question, and is Eric Holcomb here to answer? But we do, and we are having a separate-
You want to hold that then?
Okay, sure.
I just happen to, and so what I'll do is go ahead and move to Councilman Bullock.
Again, thank you so much for your team being here. This is a question more so, and it makes me think about a conversation I had with a Councilor reporter, thinking about the Planning Academy. I know that has borne some fruit over the last several years. Can you talk to what extent it's been helpful for your work and how you see that going forward?
Yes, and I'll let Stephanie answer that one also.
Thank you, yes. So we were speaking, I think, at the very beginning of this hearing about how are we working with communities? And I think one of the mistakes many institutions, institutions as well as government make is we like to use the word partner with communities a little loosely, because when one institution has so much more information than the community, how fruitful is a partnership when there's such an imbalance? So what the Planning Academy sets out to do is write those scales a bit. And so we've had approximately 246 residents come through this program, and out of our 280 or so neighborhoods that we, you know, recognize in the city, they come from over 80 different neighborhoods. Now, many of you are familiar with the housing market typology, of which we actually just recently did an update for 2023. We overlay those weaker housing markets with applications to ensure that we have a robust representation of people that are in some of our weakest housing markets, because the difference between some communities and another isn't necessarily that they know more about planning and zoning, it's that they can outsource the expertise by just paying someone else to know that for them. And for community leaders in some of our more strained and stressed communities, they're going to have to know more of these things in order to shepherd their communities through a process and to get to an eventual goal of maybe a community-recognized plan or some other type of goal that they may have as a community. So I can say that when we look at the neighborhood subcabinet, for example, effort that the administration is involved in, we have alums of our Planning Academy very much engaged in terms of Johnson Square as well as Broadway East. And if you think about the Black Arts District, the first recognized Black Arts District in the state of Maryland, Lady Breon, who was an alum of the very first academy cohort, she was able to basically lay the foundation of her application through the information she received from the Planning Academy. And also we have Eric Stevenson as an alum, Harlem Park Sandtown, who's sitting on the Planning Commission. So what I think is really important about the examples I gave is that people who come through the Planning Academy are not hoarding information, they're actually applying it to their communities, and that is enabling us to have more productive and fruitful interactions. I'll give just a quick story. There was a person who shall remain nameless, lovely person, who I think oftentimes had a lot of concerns that they lodged via email or phone. And I remember towards the end of the Planning Academy, she says to us, y'all are real people now. I see that you're real people. And at that point, this is someone who still is very assertive about their needs for their community, but the call has gone from, everything is wrong, I hate you, to, this is wrong, and I now know we can do A, B, or C. So that is not only helping us to serve her better, it's actually saving her more time as a community leader who does not get paid to think about the things she's thinking about, but she can basically have a more strategic leadership role in her community because she's better prepared to provide that support to her neighbors.
No, thank you for that. I mean, we really feel that very intimately, we think about West and Southwest Baltimore and a lot of times, folks just don't have the language, right? So I could say that as a planner, being very familiar with it, but again, folks on the ground level being able to have that language and the facility to be able to have those conversations. Can you talk a little more about the housing typology? I'm not familiar with it, but I'm glad that that has been updated, too.
So I'll definitely also let Sarah Perenellum, who's the head of our Policy and Data Analysis, jump in as well. But it's a tool and something that we prepare and update for the purposes of our colleagues at the Housing, you know, and Community Development Agency, and I want to give Sarah opportunity to step in if you want to just talk highly level about what the typology means for our work.
I think the new housing market typology is available now on CodeMap. If you want to check it out, you can check it out. And we have been working with the consultants to, for the first time, be able to compare better this version of the housing market typology with previous versions. And so we're really excited about that, and we'll have more of that information available soon in terms of how to do those comparisons from a data perspective. But the housing market typology looks at, for people who aren't familiar, looks at a series of different data sets and then finds where there's commonalities across different types of neighborhoods. So it's basically grouping neighborhoods based on those different data sets. And then we're able to use that within city government to apply policies that target based on the needs of each neighborhood. So the middle neighborhood strategy kind of comes from the housing market typology. You can use those data sets to identify the middle neighborhoods and then apply the right types of strategies as interventions. You can look at other types of neighborhoods using that data and apply the right strategies. And so we'll be outlining that in the comprehensive plan, but the data itself is available already on CodeMap, I believe.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Middleton?
I'm passing on this one.
Councilman Schleifer, then Burnett.
Director, you were talking about different, different programs that your agency is involved in, you were talking a little bit about the middle neighborhood program. Can you tell me whose idea Clean Core was?
Clean? Clean Core came out of the Department of Planning. More specifically, it goes back to something we call the Green Network Plan. The Green Network Plan is at least five years old, maybe more. It was very much championed by my predecessor, and the Green Network Plan was created to attempt to manage the sort of scale up of demolition in the city of Baltimore that happened during the Hogan administration. So we all know the blating influence of a vacant house. A vacant lot is better than a vacant house, but a vacant lot can still be a detriment to its neighborhood unless it is managed properly. And as you know, during, in the city's budget, there is no budget for vacant land management. And every year, as our demolition strategy proceeds, that problem gets worse and worse. So we're fortunate to have a community organizer, awesome, who's in this room, that works directly with the impacted neighborhoods on how to manage the demolition process and, more specifically, what's the reuse of the vacant land after the vacant house is removed. So the Clean Core program came out of that experience. We have tried several other pilot projects under previous administrations where we attempted the private management of vacant lots at a minimum to maintain them, typically to fence and maintain them. I think we did one pilot on Frederick Avenue and one pilot on Pennsylvania Avenue. So the Clean Core, again, we have no citywide budget for vacant land management, so you can't give everything to the Parks Department, they really have their hands full. And we have to figure out as a city how to, as we downsize our population, which has been going on since World War II practically, what we're going to do with the vacant land. So our urban agricultural policy- So our urban agricultural policy, our pilot projects, and Clean Core all come out of that work. How do we gracefully manage vacant land in our, in our communities? So the, the requirements of the Clean Core Program were twofold. One was they were dirty, and they were, that was measured by the 311 calls for dirty alleys, dirty vacant lots, those kinds of things. But the second, we'll call it the equity provision, was that they were declining in population and rising in vacant houses. So we overlaid those two to develop a pool of, I think it was about 33 eligible neighborhoods, and submitted, again, for another pilot project, this one substantially larger, to fund, we ended up funding 16 neighborhoods, one with local impact aid, to address vacant lots, alleys, corner trashcans and...
Public trashcans, alleys, and vacant lots.
Right. So it is funded by recovery funds for the next two and a half, three years. But at the end of the day, we will still have a vacant land management problem. Also want to, want to add that during COVID, as you all know, a very large percentage of the Bureau of Solid Waste contracted COVID, and they were out. So all over the city, things piled up, including in vacant lots and alleys in distressed neighborhoods. So this was the tool to address the immediacy of that while DPW could sort of rebuild its strength. But it does more than that. It's a, it's an employment program. We target specifically people from the neighborhoods, pay not only a living wage, but they're provided with wraparound services to help them through this transition period. And then the Office of Employment Development works with them on permanent employment, but more specifically on permanent employment with Department of Public Works. So that's kind of how that program came out of the Department of Planning.
So just to, if I may correct you, there is in the budget cleaning for vacant properties and, and others. There's, part of the challenge that we have is that the Bureau of Solid Waste and the plan to clean those don't have enough resources. And so what I'm trying to understand is why you felt that $15 million should go to some community groups to temporarily do community cleanups on vacant lots and in alleyways, when we have hundreds of hardworking men and women in the Department of Public Works who don't have the new equipment and supplies that these community groups now have? And they don't have enough employees working there, so why would you think it was a good idea to have community groups give them $15 million to hire 75 employees when the Department of Public Works in the Solid Waste Division, to perform those exact functions, need those very same employees? And when you talk about jobs program, the Clean Core roles, that is just a job. What we should be doing is helping people get a career. You can have a career working for the Department of Public Works when you have a salary and benefits. Giving people $15 an hour to go around picking up wrappers from the floor in alleyways is not, is not a career, especially when it ends in two years. So why do you think that that is a better use of $15 million than supporting DPW and having them hire these folks, getting them the equipment and supplies that they need?
Yep. Well, we're well aware of that, Councilmen. The Department of Public Works has had a tremendous problem, as they testified here, in both acquiring equipment and in hiring personnel. Part of the important part of this is to reach down and find people that were not in the labor force and provide them with the support and experience that they needed to get in the labor force. So we fully expect a large number of these folks to end up working for the Department of Public Works. If they don't find something that they like, better. But that is the intent of the program. It is not a permanent program. And I think by the time this program ends, the Department of Public Works or the Bureau of Solid Waste will be able to catch their breath, repair their facilities. We talked about their facilities in the, in the capital budgeting process. Their, their showers don't work, their HVAC doesn't work, the trucks don't have air conditioning. They have a lot of work to do to be able to recruit and retain good people. And I think this will address some of the most distressed neighborhoods with empowering them. They get to pick the lots and the alleys that get cleaned. They get to determine success in their neighborhoods while the Department of Public Works catches up. Thank you.
So that's exactly my point, is that, first of all, there's no experience needed. Any one of those employees can apply to work in the Bureau of Solid Waste, and they would get the job. That's number one. Number two, for the exact reasons you just outlined are exactly why I'm saying that that program makes absolutely no sense. The Department of Public Works requested $207 million of ARPA money to fulfill their needs, all the things that you're talking about. They only received $15 million. If you did not suggest that this program exists and that this is the way this money should be spent, then the Department of Public Works would be able to double their investment in their fleet and in their capacity and in their supplies. So do you believe that, that this program is working now that we're six months in? Do you think the Clean Core Program is working?
Sure. Just wanted to address one of your earlier comments. It's not, it wasn't just the Planning Department. It's actually a multi-agency effort from DPW to MOED, the Mayor's Office, DHCD. There are various components of Clean Core that are designed to address longstanding issues in neighborhoods as well as have people be employed. But I did just want to make the point that while it started in planning, all of those agencies came together and thought it was a good idea to move forward. I just wanted to make that point.
So, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. But when the Department of Public Works was here and I asked them about it, I have never seen them distance themselves from anything as quickly as they distance themselves from this program. So when I asked them about this program, they said, "No, no, that's, that's planning." You know, ask planning about that. That was their idea.
So, so we are the lead agency, and we, the program managers for Clean Core, they live within the Planning Department. So to your point about whether or not Clean Core is working, so right now, with the five active organizations that have been funded by Clean Core, we know that there have been 302 mowing and cleaning services on vacant lots. There have been over 662 cleaning services in alleys. And I would also suggest that the members of the city council, as their neighborhood leaders, who have been our partners in this, whether or not they have appreciated Clean Core, they've been overwhelmingly supportive of the program because of the transformational nature that it has provided to them. One, in terms of helping to build their capacity, but as well, again, longstanding issues that had not been previously addressed have been getting addressed.
Well, how many people are working for Clean Core right now?
So, right, so over the course of three months...
No, no, today, how many are working?
So right now, 44. However, over the course of three months, about 83 people have been hired through the six different programs. And so one of the challenges that Director Ryer spoke to, and why it's so important that this is a partnership, where we partner directly with MOED, and they're actually supporting the Clean Core Program by providing mobile, mobile career staff. So in order to actually do exactly what you said, one, get people prepared for jobs potentially within other agencies, as well as, you know, if they wanted to go a different track, doing exactly that. So the mobile career navigators are actually assigned, each organization has a one assigned. We've done a session with them where they have signed up all of the, all of the current workers in order to be able to help connect them with other resources and wraparound services that they need.
So it sounds like there's retention issues if there's been over 80 people hired, and now there's 44. But out of the 44, can you just tell me from your notes what the breakdown is and which, how many of those 44 employees work for which entity?
Sure. So as I noted, so the 44 is based on the current five that are active, the current five organizations. We know, I'm sure you know, that one is no longer active. So if we're looking at the 44 in total, for Broadway East CDC, they have two neighborhoods. They have 11 currently employed, Bond Secure, 11, Park Heights Renaissance, 7, Civic Works, 9, and Westport CDC, 6. And I will also...
Can you say that one more time? 11 Broadway East?
Yep. 11 Broadway East, 11 Bond Secure, 7, Park Heights Renaissance, 9, Civic Works, and Westport CDC, 6. And I will note that, you know, our neighborhood leaders, one was actually in our Neighborhood Sub-Cabinet meeting for Broadway East last week, and she spoke to, you know, the folks that she has been hiring. So these are, a lot of them are returning citizen, citizens, a lot of them have severe barriers to employment. And so she talked about, you know, the work that she's doing as well in conjunction with MOED, one, to, yes, to retain employees, because they do have those challenges, but that is a part of the design of the program, two, have a touch point for those people and those populations.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett, then Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know part of the, the response to this, but do you want to lift up the Resiliency Hub program that the Planning Department runs? Can you speak to, I guess, the general ecosystem of resiliency hubs, why they matter, why they needed, and some of the, the best practices and, and I guess, sites that we can lift up that really speak to why this work matters?
I'll start, and then Stephanie can, can finish. I mean, a resiliency hub is a community-based resource after the disaster occurs. It's not a shelter. It's after the fact. So when you need electricity to charge your phone, or water, or medical supplies, or you need to refrigerate your insulin, all those kinds of things are what the resiliency hub is for.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman, for the question. As the director mentioned earlier, we're in the midst of our, you know, disaster preparedness, you know, update. And it really is related, right? Because when people are having either the effects of nature or man-made threats like cyber attacks or what have you, a lot of the needs are the same. People need food, people need medicine, they need electricity, things of that nature. And what we've learned coming through COVID is that sometimes people don't trust things that are explicitly and obviously stood up by government. It may be the last thing they want to connect with, despite the fact that there could be an abundance of resources there. So what resiliency hubs have set out to do is to just give those places that people already want to be and already trust the resources to not, to meet the moment, whatever those moments may be. And I know you're very familiar with the repeated, you know, flooding incidents and what Still Meadow Church has meant for your constituents, but across the city, there are different things. Sometimes it's a faith house, sometimes it's just a community kind of center or space. But I want to lift up that similar to the national and international attention we've received, you know, just generally for our sustainability work and our food policy work, our resiliency hub work is seen as at the vanguard of a movement that is both nationally and internationally being observed. I participate in the Lead for Cities meetings on behalf of the City of Baltimore. And, you know, many thriving and much better-resourced cities like Seattle are trying to figure out how they can do what we're already doing. So it's something that I think, as a city, we should be proud of, but I think we also should also realize that the threats are only going to multiply. We're already a city that has, you know, urban heat islands, issues with flooding. And then, of course, it wasn't that long ago that we navigated a cyber attack, and those threats may, you know, present themselves again. So I think the resiliency hubs aren't just a feel-good thing, they're a practical lifeline for communities that oftentimes do not feel best supported by government explicitly.
And I would add, Councilman, I know one of the things that keeps the Sustainability Director up at night is a situation where we have a heat wave and a power loss at the same time. And there's studies and modeling that have been done. There, there literally would be thousands of fatalities under that scenario. And that's why we're, the emphasis on solar power and backup batteries for these resiliency hubs.
I just want to mention that there is a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant that we are in consideration for right now that would, that would infuse additional resources into our resiliency hub network. So we don't want to say that it's in the bag, but we're feeling good about it, so I'll say that much.
And that was, that was my follow-up, was, I guess, scaling up. So that's good to know, that, that's one, that we have a good chance of securing that. Because the, the one in Still Meadow for sure is like a gem for the city and for the, for the community that surrounds it. But I don't think, you know, it's sort of like when you're in it, you just sort of feel like, oh, this is amazing work that this particular church is doing. But for, for me, it's just like, well, how do we scale this up? I mean, obviously, we went through two 100-year floods, or 1,000-year floods, within two months of each other, and so it was like a very unique situation. But obviously, those circumstances exist in Councilmember Ramos's district and other parts of the city where the potential for really bad disasters can exist. And having those strong community partners with the tools to respond, frankly, probably faster than the city can respond, at least initially until we can scale up, are critical. And so it's good to hear that there is, because my, my second question was like, how do we grow these? And it sounds like the resources may be on the way.
If this particular grant, Councilman, that we're hoping, you know, to secure, we have support from FEMA as well as the Maryland Emergency, you know, Response Agency. It would be a $7 million grant that would really help us to build up our solar generation at our resiliency hubs.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Director, I want to talk through Service Number 763, the Comprehensive Planning and Resource Management. I want to really understand the first sentence. It says, "The recommended budget removes temporary funding of $200,000 included in fiscal year '22 and '23 to complete the required update for the city's comprehensive plan." Does that not come under your, so you're just removing that funding and reallocating? What's the plan there? And so the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because I know the plan is going to be released in 2024, and so I want to make sure that you all have adequate funding, given the limitations that we experienced in last year's census. I know that the comprehensive plan, as it kind of shares the vision of neighborhoods for the city, I want to make sure that you have adequate funding to do that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we would, we would certainly welcome more, but that was our, our budget was spread over those two previous years. That's why you don't see it in this year. We will be implementing or finishing the plan this year, but the funding was in two previous years.
Okay, and so the development and implementation of the plan, that is, one, still going on, and it's not being affected by the temporary reduction of funding?
Correct.
Is that clear?
So it's not a reduction in funding? So in FY '22 and then in FY '23, we received $250,000 each. So that represents what the full budget was intended to be.
Okay, and so my question is, why wasn't it in FY '23 and for FY '24 as well? So you, you see what I'm doing? It should be a budget-neutral shift instead of a reduction. If the plan is supposed to be released in 2024, I would assume that you would need the same capacity and resources and funding associated.
So those were the allocations? And so we are still continuing to spend those funds? Right, and so we were able to do a carry forward?
Ah, okay, perfect, okay.
However, I will then turn around to our friends at BBMR and just note that the last year of the carry forward, we still need to work through with them because that did not actually make it to our budget.
Okay.
It's a carryover, so...
And BBMR, why, why did that carry over? And BBMR, why did that carry over, not make it to their budget?
It was just an administrative issue in our office, but we've worked it out with planning and had it all figured out for that to be covered for this year. And so as the deputy director stated, the allocation of funding in '22 and '23 was for them to complete the plan. And since that is completed in terms of getting the plan out, then we remove the funding. It's really a one-time increase when those, these plans are under development that we do when we build it out. And we do this routinely with, with planning for the various plans that they do. So as they're doing their disaster preparedness plan and the other plans, you'll see increases to their budget for them to scale up. And then when those plans are completed, that work, then the budget is reduced. And then the three years later, when they do it again, it comes back in.
And so that's particularly the premise of my question. If we are developing a plan for 2024, why was there a temporary reduction? So-
So the plan was developed through 2022 and 2023, and the funding was there to then be launched in '24. So-
Ah, okay. Okay. I see now. And Director, just the reason why I'm, you know, really harping on that comprehensive planning, I reviewed the last one that was done under the Dixon administration, and I could not seem to find a neighborhood in South Baltimore proper. And so you have south and southwest neighborhoods listed in the neighborhoods. I think it's the GPA neighborhoods. There's not a neighborhood in South Baltimore proper. And so I'm a little bit concerned about, the reason why I'm asking, I'm a little bit concerned about the development of this plan that's going to be released in 2024. I want to make sure that not only we're encompassing our GPA neighborhoods in the middle of the city, we're also including neighborhoods in South Baltimore as well.
I'll let Sarah to speak to our outreach. I think it was very intentional to reach neighborhoods that had not been reached in the past, but Sarah can comment more on that.
Yeah. Was the question about outreach or about recommendations in the plan?
Yeah. So it's actually a two-pronged question. One, recommendations, there needs to be more engagement in South Baltimore. And number two, the reason why there needs to be more engagement with those types of plans, when we look at all of the other master plans that are created in the city, they use this model for like resource allocation, resource development, economic development. And so I want to make sure that we're using our resources to kind of encompass the entire city as opposed to cherry picking particular neighborhoods.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So there are kind of three major components in terms of the content that we're looking at for the comprehensive plan. So one section is going to be policy recommendations that will really be citywide. So we're looking at a variety of different topics, whether those are affordable housing, vacant housing, public transit, food access, many of the topics that we've talked about today, actually, will be included in the comprehensive plan. And those emerged from engagement that we did with residents. So we started with some guidance from the American Planning Association about best practices, and then we went to residents and said, which of these topics really resonate with you? And we held one of those open houses in Cherry Hill. So we did get feedback from, from residents in South Baltimore in particular at that open house, saying kind of which were the topics that resonated with them. So based on that input, which we had open houses in other parts of the city as well, we, you know, focused in on those priority topics. So that's going to be one major element of the comprehensive plan. Another major element of the comprehensive plan is going to be looking at planning for retention and growth. And so that's going to also have different elements that will be citywide. We will be talking about the housing market typology, which one of your colleagues mentioned earlier. So we will be including that in the comprehensive plan. We'll be talking about the impact investment areas and the middle neighborhood strategy. We will also have a proposed land use map. So we'll have that citywide, looking at kind of what the future is and where land uses should be changing and where they should be staying the same over the next 10 years. We will be looking at the Growing Green Initiative, which came up earlier. So we'll have all of these different pieces. We'll be looking at where new residential construction, where there's capacity and demand for that. And so all of those are going to be kind of citywide, looking at planning for retention and growth.
Yeah. And I definitely appreciate all of that. And I know that you're very well close telling me about, you know, spring open houses. My office kind of helped coordinate with that. But there are multiple other communities southern from Cherry Hill. Like, we have to really look at how we are assessing and the parameters that we're using to kind of identify middle neighborhoods, because we're still missing a large swath of neighborhoods that are not, one, they're resource deserts. Because so many master plans are devoted and associated with those types of kind of cherry picking neighborhoods, we need to make sure that we have a much better comprehensive approach and not just particular neighborhoods that are quote unquote up and coming or in development. So-
I just want to add one more thing for your consideration as well, Councilwoman, is that coming out of Planning Academy and having so many alums, we actually also, in conjunction with the comp plan, have comp plan community ambassadors, of which many were also alums of the Planning Academy, not exclusively, but many. And so you do have those people from Bay Brook, Brooklyn, like different neighborhoods that were a part of advising, do we want to do something different than the 2006 plan, right? And so what we heard from this group of people, which included people that you do represent, is that we don't want something so high-minded that it actually does not occur, but we don't want to have a poverty of ambition either, right? You want to have something where results can be realized, but also have some level of vision. So what we're looking to do with this comp plan is, on a continuum, explain what resources would be needed for Vision A, Vision B. You see what I'm saying? Because I think if everything is just optimal, if you had all the resources, we could come up feeling defeated because we all have such amazing dreams. And I don't want to say that the dreams of someone from South Baltimore are all that different than the dreams of someone, you know, from Western East Baltimore. But we want to make sure that their perspectives are at the table, and I want you to know that their ambassadors are at the table from the beginning to shape. What do we really want to do here?
Perfect. And will the council be able to review that plan prior to its release in 2024?
Absolutely. You have to approve it, actually.
Okay, perfect.
So yes, you're going to be intimately involved.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We continue to, hi, Chris, my constituent. Thank you for letting me be your representative, I guess. We struggle to provide city services. It's a money game, right? We have, we have financial difficulties and challenges, and there are all kinds of things that constrain them. But we all, you know, recognize that the greatest source of revenue that we rely upon is taxpayers' taxes, whether that's, you know, primarily property taxes, and then income taxes after that, and then piggyback taxes, right? Other cities have engaged in modeling of the, of like value per acre models for the yield and potential yield of different communities and, you know, very small segments and subsegments of the city and communities within it, which I think is a really important part of understanding the nexus of land use and tax yield, land use and financial productivity as a corporate entity. And, you know, I think that this can be revealing of, I think, misconceptions that we may have about which communities are most productive. I mean, I've done some crude and cursory kind of comparisons, for example, of 30% vacant and blighted area in Harlem Park versus a gas station on Harford Road, almost at the county line, you know, in this kind of bucolic kind of neighborhood. And Harlem Park outperforms a gas station, even with the level of blight and vacancy that's around it, because, you know, gas stations are an exceptionally poor use of land and an exceptionally poor yield of revenue to the city as a result of how, how low they are assessed. And I think that the, you know, and I've done similar comparisons. I've compared the same geographic area in Guilford to a similar and equivalent geographic landmass in Hamden. And Hamden trounces Guilford in terms of yields. So I think that we often have these kind of misconceptions that a more detailed study than what I think that we have could help us to better understand and guide our planning policy and our land use policy. And I think that this nexus of tax yield and revenue available to us and land use is like really the perfect nexus, a wheelhouse for the planning department to take leadership on. And so I guess my question is, can, I'd like to ask the planning department to come up with a cost estimate to be able to do the kind of, I mean, there's one firm that's called Urban Three. It's kind of the only one that I know about, but I'm sure that there is a, there are underlying concepts to this kind of modeling and assessment. To, can we get a cost estimate for what it would take for the planning department to, like, within the next year, do like a value per acre kind of assessment along the lines of, you know, if you want to use it for reference, what Urban Three does?
So your question, could, could we figure out sort of an RFI, request for information, what it would cost to do that analysis?
Yeah. Or, you know, can we figure out how to do it in-house? I think it'd be great for this to be something that we could do in the next year. I feel like a turnaround time on something like this isn't, you know, extreme. It could, what it might take to make something like this happen in the next year.
I can talk to the, to the finance director about that. Be happy to do that.
Okay.
Well, hang on. Let me jump in. So I think what he's asking is, can you do it in-house within the agency, within your budget? Are you saying that you don't have the resources to do it, and that's why you would need to talk to the finance director? Or, when you say finance director, are you referring to your CFO within planning?
No.
I just want to get clear.
Mr. Chair, I think what I'm actually asking is, can the planning department look into like what this is, and either the idea of doing it in-house, or what it might cost to contract to have somebody do it?
Got it. Does that, that work?
We could do that.
When can you get back to us on that?
Oh, give us at least a week on that one.
Does that work for you, Councilman?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina, or Nate, or, got it. Thank you. Councilman.
I don't think I have anything else, Mr. Chair. Yeah.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to the conversation we've been having on the resiliency work. You have put in the budget for a new resiliency supervisor, director. Can you tell us a little bit more about what that work is going to look like? It sounds like you're growing a new division, if you will. And so I'm just curious what that ends up, what that work looks like. Is it, is it just the resiliency hubs, or is it something else?
No. In a nutshell, that position will staff and coordinate the, the sustainability sub-cabinet.
Okay.
That, that is the purpose of the request, and it came from the CIO for that. So that, the idea is that coordination will, will leverage the other agencies' work, and it's six work groups with that position. So it does a lot more than a normal position.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. One of the things that I was curious about is that the councilman, Councilwoman Burnett and I have been obviously very laser-focused on the flooding work and the flooding, the flood mitigation in particular. And I know we've worked with Director Atilla, Atia, and a couple of others. There's just really amazing data that we now have that is, if you want to nerd out one day, it's the greatest data ever in terms of where our flooding is happening, which we discovered it's by our buried rivers, basically. And we're mapping also where the vacant lots are, talk about a vacant lot strategy, to see if we could actually either acquire them, or if we have, if there are already city properties, just to leave them vacant, plant a bunch of trees, and have a way to try to mitigate that type of thing. Now, I know that that's, you know, some of the planners in your shop are really around the coastal flooding, and I think we've been very clear that the pluvial or the inland flooding is just as terrible, that we have to do that. So I just wasn't sure whether the resiliency person was going to do that. It sounds like no. It sounds like that's not what they're doing.
Can I jump in? Yeah. So the resiliency person will be staffing the sustainability sub-cabinet, of which buildings, there's a flooding work group, actually, of the sustainability sub-cabinet.
Okay, there we go.
Yes. I wanted to, you know, so they will be triaging and supporting all that work, of which flooding is a specific component.
So we should meet with them because we haven't, we-
Absolutely.
We have a plan. We just haven't had time to execute it. So, but we'll need your help. But I just appreciate that the really rich, amazing data that we got was really amazing, just amazing. So, you know, and I know, I've actually talked to the state about this, too. So I think we might have a plan. We just have to execute it. So.
Certainly, it would be consistent with the green network plan, for starters. And we're looking at some sort of land banking for that reason now. And I know in Councilwoman Porter's district, there, after Hurricane Agnes, there are places along the Gwynne's Falls that were neighborhoods, that were bought and cleared and are now small forests just for that reason. As long as-
I'm not going to get anybody out of their house. We're not doing that. But we are looking at where the, where the, you know, major flooding is happening and how we can mitigate it. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for that explanation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Ryer. It was nice to see you the other night, as well as your team. Nice to see you all today. One of the people who I've really come to appreciate in your office is Abby Cox, who has taught me a lot about the healing power of nature and what it means when young people have more exposure to nature, to parks, to wildlife, to, you know, and just how healing that can be. Abby is a member of the city's trauma-informed care task force, and they really contribute around pushing for us to always think about access to green space and just giving our kids the same opportunity that kids in suburbs, kids who have access to wealth, get. I think it's really important. And so I wanted to just start with that compliment for Abby. On that same note, I am really concerned about the Greenway Trail. Director Ryer, you and I have talked a number of times about this project. I fundamentally believe it could be catalytic for our city. We look at places like Austin and DC that have really gone deep on trail networks, and it makes an enormous amount of difference just in stabilizing neighborhoods, in giving folks, again, kids, a place to walk, or bike, or scooter, or just go. And I'm just concerned that we're going to stall out on this project. It's been a couple of years, and in my estimation, not enough progress has been made. And had this conversation with a few different agencies, DOT and City Administrator Leach, fully understand that in some neighborhoods, there are concerns, and there is pushback. But I just fundamentally believe that if Baltimore is going to be the comeback city that we all in this room believe it to be, we have to be able to move forward on big projects like this. And if that means moving it out of the median in certain neighborhoods, if that means repositioning, fine. But we got to move forward, and I'm worried that we are stagnating and that state money will eventually go away, or any number of things could happen. So this is a request to you, because I know that planning has been really instrumental in this project, is to coordinate with the city administrator and come up with a plan in the next four weeks for how we can move it forward. Again, I know some of this is dependent on some federal money, and Congressman Mfume has been extremely helpful and supportive. I know state, a lot of state money is involved. And so I know there's a lot of moving pieces here. But I just worry that projects like this- this deserve our support, and part of the job of us as elected officials, and I believe you as the Director of Planning, is to put our shoulders into moving important things forward, and not allow what I believe to be a minority of folks, not that their voices don't matter, but a minority of folks who are opposed to the project, to completely derail it. So that's what I'd like to ask, is for a commitment that within four weeks of today, you, City Administrator Leach, Department of Transportation, everybody could get in the same room and come back to the council of this committee with a plan for how we move this thing forward, and how we push through some of the challenges that we've encountered.
Great. Okay, we'll do that. I'm sure, I'll talk to Nina, and we'll pull that together. Would you like a recap of where we are right now?
Sure.
Happy to. So this is an inter-agency issue. The 35-moat loop, which came out of the Green Network Plan, as you know, is a combination of a trail network on city parkland, and a trail network on city right-of-way, right? So those are the two implementation agencies that we have to coordinate to create this network. Our role as a department, again, going back to the Green Network Plan, was to close the loop, to essentially assemble the properties necessary to close the loop. And we've been working with the Mayor's Office of Economic Development to do that. So that consisted of a couple of pieces. One is this ongoing effort to acquire a railroad parcel, which is a significant parcel. We haven't quite assembled the funding yet. We had a little bit in the CIP that we're using for incidentals, like appraisals and things like that, to sort of grease the wheels. But the actual acquisition is being paid for by a state grant, a little bit of city money. Now we have a federal enhancement. I hope we have a second. And that creates all these hoops you've got to jump through. Once we do that, which I think, working with Senator Carden's office, we'll be submitting another enhancement grant, and that will do it, I think, from that standpoint. That will trigger a lease that's already drafted and ready to be signed with Baltimore Gas and Electric, which is the sort of last connecting piece. In the meantime, we've begun working on standards that can be incorporated into any private developer's project. So, for example, in Brewer's Hill, the developer set aside a property for that. And then we're going after individual state grants for pieces that we have to build, the city would have to build. So this is, and against the backdrop of the Department of Transportation, has a larger grant for the right-of-way in the northern piece of the city, which is what you're referring to. That said, we haven't, we haven't all gotten together, the agencies, for a while, so be happy to do that.
Yeah, no, I would appreciate it. You know, it has felt just somewhat disjointed. And, you know, you mentioned in a comment to one of my colleagues that one of the common concerns you hear is that the left hand's not talking to the right hand. And I think that's how folks in our community have felt about this project, like there hasn't been much communication out to our communities about like what's happening. And, you know, do folks know that we have to purchase this parcel from Norfolk Southern, and all the different sort of intricate pieces? And any inter-agency thing is hard. That's why I'm glad we have City Administrator Leach. But I would just say that I think getting everybody together in a room seems like this is a really good juncture, because, again, we have an opportunity to grow and leverage assets like this one without doing what those other cities did, and just displacing everybody, and gentrifying everybody out. I think like Baltimore can be the city that really figures this kind of thing out, but we got to have projects like this one. We have to have green space. We have to have access to nature for our kids, our families, and our older adults. And so, again, within four weeks, I would love to hear a report back on that, and I appreciate your work on this.
Great.
Thank you. Councilman Conway, then Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would share the sentiments by my colleague around the plan. I agree. I think it's going to be really important for us as a city to be competitive and attractive for families. The question I want to ask is actually around waste in our zero-waste efforts. I know DPW has set pretty, not hard and fast goals, but certainly begun conversations around zero waste and reducing our waste. I'm really curious about how planning, and specifically the Office of Sustainability, thinks about its role in helping DPW achieve that goal.
That's a very good question, and I think Stephanie can probably answer it more succinctly.
Stephanie, all my questions are coming to you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. So one of the things I want to lift up is that the Zero-Waste Manager at DPW started off as a zero-waste fellow in the Office of Sustainability. So we feel like we prepped her up to transition to that leadership role. And so, as you probably know, the Sustainability Plan has a focus on trying to get the city towards, you know, a zero-waste model. One of the things that we are trying to figure out with our colleagues within the agency, particularly with the CIP, is where do we get funding for some of the things we really want to see, particularly scaling up, you know, you know, commercial-grade composting, and also looking at just ways we can incentivize some behavior change. And so we really are having a conversation about where do we get the resources from to make these things happen, because I think we know what could happen, and we know what does happen in other jurisdictions like Montgomery County, because this composting could result in a product we sell as a jurisdiction. It could be, what would they call it, black gold, right? So I think that is something we're hoping to move towards, but to be completely frank, I think we're nowhere near operationalizing something like that imminently, but we're trying to lay the groundwork for it. And we also believe that through the Sustainability Sub-Cabinet, it creates another leverage point for someone like her to have the thought power across city government at her disposal, not just what she can get directly with us as the Office of Sustainability.
I appreciate that. I think, in my mind, there are a couple of key things operationally that need to happen, certainly in DPW, but then also infrastructurally that need to happen. And of course, given that you guys command the capital budget, planning those things out over time, and positioning the city to apply for federal funds or otherwise to execute those things is going to be really, really important. So of course, working with the Office of Infrastructure. I don't know how often we have the opportunity to have those meetings. I'm sure they happen, but I really want to begin to think about how we can begin taking steps in that direction, no matter how small, because I think time will continue, and, you know, unless we put something forward, we won't move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock, no questions at this time. Then it's myself, and then Councilman of the Fifth District. So I want to go back to the discussion of the five, I guess, nonprofits with the Clean Corps, because I didn't want to leave that hanging the way the last conversation was, because I do know that there are some areas of districts where the council people have been very pleased, and the Clean and Green Team of Park Heights Renaissance is one of those. And just for a little bit of history, I want to say that the Clean and Green Team of the Renaissance probably was the first to really think of this idea, because before they even started this idea, I, my office was the office that consistently got calls about problems with vacant lots throughout the southern part of Park Heights, and almost felt like that I was an agency manning those things. So when the Renaissance came up with the idea to help Housing and other agencies to, you know, to clean areas, to cut the grass, if you go down Park Heights Avenue and you see that 17 acres that right now looks like a park, that's because of the Clean and Green Team, not a city agency. They are the ones that have been manning that park-like area until we break ground for that development. So, and to take it a step further, the, I know a lot of these workers by the visits that I do, and they are out there in that community, just doing things that they don't even have to do, just so very appreciative. I have talked to some of those employees. They're, they're excited about their jobs. They're, some of them are ready to move to that next level of getting in a career with DPW, to get those benefits and opportunities. And now the Clean and Green Team wants to take it to another level and acquire a building to start an apprenticeship, and make that program really flourish. So I know within my district, it is one of the, those five Clean Corps groups, and I appreciate the work that you have put together to help to make that happen. They now just need that extra funding to acquire the building that they want, to store the equipment, and do all those things to enhance that partnership with DPW and Housing. And I know this summer, they purposely slacked off on lots, so the agencies can actually see that they, you know, it was, it's because of them that they kept up with everything, because I'm getting calls about some of those lots, and just to kind of, they need that appreciation to know that they are, you know, there. So I know CHAPS is up next, Mr. Chair, so I just wanted to, oh, he's left away. So I just want to kind of stop there and get, pardon? Yes. Was there, before we were kind of heading into CHAPS, was there any more questions for, that you see the time? So quickly, a quick last question and statement for, with planning, so we can get right in the CHAP. And Councilman Schleifer, that's, you're next.
Thank you. And follow-up to the last part we're discussing, and what I just heard from my colleague, is that obviously some, some groups are doing good work, and clearly by the fact that you canceled one of the contracts, some are not. And so can you just explain to us why you canceled the contract as soon as you did? What's the reasoning behind it?
Sure. So I do just want to know, as a part of Clean Corps, we've had several layers of financial and programmatic oversight. So along with the team at MORP, as well as the team at the Civic Fund, we have been, since the program began, rigorously looking at the invoices that the grantees have been submitting, tracking their spending, as well as through daily, weekly, and monthly reporting, tracking their programmatic efforts. And so, of course, through this oversight, we have also been, you know, making sure that there is compliance with all of the requirements of both ARPA and, you know, the fidelity of the program itself. So when we identified several issues with compliance with one of the organizations, we moved to quickly resolve the immediate compliance issues, but then ultimately determine that we would no longer continue with them. And so therefore, the Civic Fund canceled their contract.
Is there any money missing?
Money missing. So I will just note that this process is still playing out. And so as a part of the cancellation of the contract, the request made to the grantee is that by the end of June, they would return what is, what we calculated as the balance of the grant, back to the Civic Fund. So I think until we reach that deadline, we won't really know.
I guess my request on that is just that when you receive that amount that gets returned, if you can please let us know what that is, as well as a full accounting of everything that they didn't return, of the money they had been given, and just a list of what all that went to, just a line-by-line of it. Are they also going to be required to give back the equipment that they purchased with that money?
So that's also, again, this process is still playing out as a part of federal dollars. The contract, you know, states that it's really the federal government who will make a request back, for equipment back. But again, we're still having those conversations with the Civic Fund, as well as MORP. And I can just, you know, tell you that the majority of the funds across Clean Corps, it's looked to be about 75% for payroll, that varies by organization, but most of it is in paying workers.
Yeah, and I read through the budget, I mean, so even though 75% of it is, just on that one specific case that you're, that you're referencing, that still means there's over, there's six figures worth of equipment and supplies that are out there. And when you say about the federal government is the one that would ultimately need to request that back, if that equipment never comes back, does the federal government then require the city to pay for it, and that we don't get reimbursed as a city for that money?
So let me answer two of those questions. So I just want to make clear, the grantees, what we advanced them as a part of, was the first 90 days of their budget. And so even though they might have had, you know, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, depending on the number of neighborhoods that they were responsible for, we basically took a third of the annual budget, and that's what we advanced them. So we're, in no case are we talking millions of dollars, but I just wanted to note that. And then, in terms of the specifics about, you know, the equipment and the paying back, I will say that the, the expenses that were submitted to us, you know, for equipment, for payroll, you know, we are still in the process of verifying receipts. So there are, as a part of that advance, a good amount of that, as they began operations at the end of February, were spent on things that they were supposed to spend the money on. And so the, again, the compliance, once the compliance issues arose is where the question, and the meeting their obligations is where the question came in about the balance. So we shouldn't be expecting the full amount to be returned, because they paid people, and they actually bought supplies that they needed in order to do the work.
Right. So the fact that they were paid the supplies, that equals, well, more than just the 90 days of payroll that's necessary. Because if you multiply the advance that was given to each organization, and then multiply that by, you know, the, you know, by eight, that far exceeds what this two-year plan is supposed to be. And so I guess there's one, one closing thing here. Who, Director, who in the planning department is ultimately responsible for overseeing that people meet criteria, and that money's going to the correct places of people who have capacity, and who actually have entities? Because this isn't the first time there's an issue like this. I mean, I've brought to your attention, we've spoken about this at PCDA meetings, where you've issued awarded contracts to entities that don't exist. And then, you know, I understand that your response to that was that you ultimately never ended up issuing a check, but you still approved major expenditures to entities that, again, were never registered, simply just didn't exist. And so if these things are not brought to your attention from the outside, I mean, who's actually vetting it? Who's doing the most basic process of looking at any entity that's coming through the planning department? You're dealing with billions of dollars. Who's, who's ultimately looking through that to make sure that these are actually, either if it's a for-profit, that they're actually an LLC in good standing, or some other entity, or if they're a nonprofit, they're nine, they're filing their 990s, and they're actually a legitimate group? I mean, who's doing that across the board for all of the planning department money?
Could I speak to Clean Corps first?
Do you want to do that?
Sure. So Clean Corps specifically, we work with-
This isn't, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this isn't a Clean Corps question. This is an umbrella planning department question. Clean Corps is a $15 million program. Planning Department oversees billions of dollars. And so I'm just asking, who, who in the, from the, from the planning director, who overarching? Because, I mean, the Clean Corps is just the most recent example, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, and we've spoken about this also, and you've given me the explanation. I'm now referencing, like, within the PCDA track, and there's many other tracks that you're overseeing. So who's supposed to be crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on this?
I assume by billions, you mean the capital budget.
I assume by billions, you mean the capital budget. The Planning Department does not have an accounting team. The Bureau of Finance does. So, we oversee the process of developing the capital budget. The only actions we take after the budget, for the capital budget is created, is when there's a deviation from the capital budget. There goes to the Planning Commission to approve the deviation. Otherwise, the, the Department of Finance manages the accounting side of things.
Okay. So, to my question then to the Department of Finance, are you guys consulted before the Planning Department authorizes an issuance of a grant? I know, obviously, you're involved in physically cutting a check or making an electronic transfer, but for, let's talk about the PCDA for a second. Before, when they create a spending plan, and there's entities that they're awarding contracts and grants to, are you guys consulted before that's done?
I would have to get back to you on that. BBMR is not directly involved in that, but I can confer with BAFs and others in finance to find out the specific process connected to the capital budget with-
Okay, thank you.
Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Clean Core for giving a lot of employees who would never have a job, who have never worked, who will return it, okay, who will return as citizens, get an opportunity to get some experience and probably work at DPW. I think we in the 12th and the 45th are happy for that. I know Delegate Smith is very supportive. So, we are happy that it's happening. I stopped past it a lot of times. Used to see the smile on people's face that never worked before, probably never had a check. But now they are gaining some experience, and we always talk about helping return the citizens. But that's a great opportunity to tell a story. We always talk about people that are unemployed or unemployed. That's another story we can tell. So, I'm happy with Clean Core, what's happening in the 12th and the 45th. So, kudos go to Clean Core. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other piece on Clean Core. I know we've kind of talked around to it a bit, but I will say, you know, Harlem Park was also very thankful to have that Clean Core program. It's unfortunate from, from our perspective in terms of what's happened. However, a lot of the concern we're getting is in terms of what's going to happen in terms of replacement. So, if you kind of talk about, you know, what that would look like, and how we can really manage folks' expectations moving forward, that'd be helpful, too.
Certainly. And I believe you gave an update to your staff person on yesterday. And so, what we're, so what, I want to first say, our priority is people. So, there were a number of workers impacted. So, our priority is making sure that they can quickly return to work. Our second priority, of course, is the neighborhoods and making sure they receive the services that they are due as a part of this program. So, one of the things we've been talking with the MORP team, as well as the Civic Fund about, what's the shortest path in order to be able to accomplish both goals. And so, we have been, had some discussions about some options, and we're actually, we actually scheduled a meeting for Friday to talk to the neighborhood leaders, to lay out those options for them. So, perhaps after that meeting, we'll be in a position to talk publicly about what the specific plan is, but those have been our, our main goals.
And thank you for sharing. I just want that to be on the record in terms of the communication you're having with the community in our office. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Assistant Director Stewart, on that point, and I'm assuming the program that was terminated also operated in Harlem Park, correct? So, that's the same one that operated in Upton. My constituents in Upton feel the same way, so it is unfortunate how this played out. Can you please provide something in writing to Councilman Bullock and I? And I'm assuming you're communicating directly with leadership from the Upton Planning Committee, along with the relevant associations in the 9th District, correct?
Certainly. And we actually invited Councilman Bullock's staff person to that meeting on Friday, if you also want to represent to attend.
Yes, that would be fantastic. If you could please, after this, email me the information, and someone from my team will join as well. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Colleagues, any other questions on the planning specific before we jump to CHAP? CHAP, Mr. Holcomb, Executive Director.
Eric Holcomb.
You can take a seat if you want, or you can stand. The, the choice is yours.
You need a mic.
As they say.
Before we introduce Eric, I do want to note, Councilman Bullock is on the commission, and we have seen a big change in the makeup and the leadership of the commission in the last year or so. And it's quite an aggressive group with several working committees, and I hope, I think Director Holcomb will be able to talk about that.
Does he have to recuse himself from questions? I'm just, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. He's going first. Director Holcomb.
Well, thank you so much for inviting me here, and I thank you for bringing up the slide here. Before we get into that, first thing I just want to do is just thank my staff, you know. You're, you're only as good as your staff, and the staff that I have makes me a lot better as a director, and I really want to just to put that on the record, to thank that staff. First thing I just want to do is just to go through quickly what we, what our priorities are, our mission statement. CHAP staff, one of the things that we do is administer design review. So, we have about 14,000 properties that are under CHAP purview, and we review all of the change, exterior changes to those properties. We also administer the tax credit. We have approximately about 4,000 completed projects. The majority of those projects would not have happened without that tax credit. And I would say probably half of those, or maybe a quarter, a third of those were vacant or unoccupied buildings. So, CHAP has really helped try to take our vacant building account and reduce it as best we can. We provide preservation expertise to neighborhoods, organizations, city agencies, whoever will listen to us, whether that's a his, a question about history, a question about buildings, a question about the Maryland Historical Trust, or the National Park Service, we're there to help. And we do have a new commission, really great energetic commission, that have created four committees. And just really quickly, the commission has created a Communications and Outreach Committee. How can we tell our story to the citizens of Baltimore better? How can we get our information out to the make the citizens easier to deal with us? Second one is the Conservation Districts. We have a couple of ideas of creating another, of sort of a historic, historic district, but it would be a conservation district, and that would be what we call a CHAP-like district. We, it would be a district with some sort of design review, but it would be a more lenient design review. We have a tax credit committee that was created. Of course, August 2024, I believe, is when the CHAP credit sunsets, and we will need to get that reviewed and revised. And just to let you all know, we had a good meeting with Finance, and we're going to be able to prepare a, I think, a really good report for everybody on that. And procedures and guidelines. We've heard a lot about procedures and guidelines that we want to revise. We haven't done that probably in seven or eight years, and it's time to do it again. So, we will be doing that, and of course, that will be a public process, and we'll make sure the Council is involved with that. So, with that in mind, you see here on the slide here, sort of our outcome measures, the number of authorization to proceed permits issued for historic districts and landmark properties. One of the reasons why we can never get the actual and target to really line up is because the actual is really what's happening in the economy, what's happening in local historic districts. I think one of the reasons why we were down last year is I think people, after, where we're feeling more confident of leaving their house from the pandemic, they didn't want to work on their house anymore. They wanted to go out and do more things. But, but that's one of the reasons why that was down. And the number of tax credit applications, we sort of missed the, we were under, but we had a couple of things. We had some staffing shortage. We had maternity leave. And we did hire two new, young gentlemen that are now working for CHAP, and it has taken a while to get them up to speed. And not only that, the other senior CHAP staff has, has helped them out in any time that they needed it. So, it's taken a little bit longer to get them up to speed than we would like. With that in mind, I bet you all have a lot of questions for me.
Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. In lieu of time, just a quick question. Are there any financial incentives for property owners that are in historic areas? We do have some areas of preservation that are in impoverished areas, and some of those residents need, you know, assistance and help. Are there any incentives or grants for them?
The answer is, we have very little funds now, and a facade improvement grant program that we've had for several years to help out folks in local historic districts that needed a little bit of financing to, to get their new windows, to get their new doors, to put on their new roof. And that is something that we'll be pursuing in the capital budget next year to try to get that up and running. Second thing, of course, are the tax credits. Those, those are the ones that have really made a neighborhood-wide impact on, on communities. And folks in local historic districts or national register historic districts are eligible not only for the local, but also for the state, and if you are an income-producing property for a federal historic preservation tax credit. And they can all be layered together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. Then Porter?
So, good afternoon again. I really do appreciate, you know, the work that, that CHAP does. Can you talk a little bit about the economic impact of the tax credit over the years? I know that's something that, the beginning of a lot of the hearings that we have, it's a proud point. So, you talk about that a little bit?
It's one of my favorite subjects. Thank you. We, we have, and I could get, I can send a tax credit report that we done about three or four years ago, that really explains sort of how the tax credit has made significant impacts in many of our neighborhoods. But what, there's, there's several things that, that we kind of see about the tax, about the tax credit. One of the things is, when you take a, a row of houses that, that's 50%, vacant, and you rehab those, and you, what you discover is the other 50% of the houses on that row also increase in value. And you'll also see what we call a halo effect. So, you see, in that neighborhood, you see an increase of value of the properties surrounding that. Why is that important? I think it's really important for intergenerational wealth. And it's the way to say that folks who have stayed in these neighborhoods, some of them that are more distressed than other ones, this is the way to say, hey, your house is your biggest investment. And when you see the tax credit being used in your neighborhood, you start to see that investment increase. So, that's one of the things that we would like to say. We also have seen large transformational projects, reused projects of large buildings in, in communities and neighborhoods using the tax credit. And that building, because it was vacant and abandoned, is now rehabbed and is, is using, is used by the community, used by a business in the community. You see that whole community start to come back, sort of a game changer kind of thing. So, those are the two things. I could keep on going, but if, if, you know, for time, I can, but I'll make sure that I send that tax credit report to you all.
Thank you. Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a quick question about CHAP requirements in commercial corridors. I'm not really sure that, given the public safety issues that we have in the city, some of the codes may need to be updated in this next kind of iteration of review of the codes. And so, can you speak to how, can you speak to kind of like CHAP and its requirements in commercial corridors? And then I'll follow up with the, an issue and another question.
Yeah. First, the commercial corridors that we have designed purview over are only the corridors that are in local historic districts. So, not all of the main streets that BDC runs are, are local historic districts. But we, the, the way that CHAP works is, you know, any exterior change on a property that's in a local historic district would be reviewed and approved by CHAP staff, and they would need to meet the preservation guidelines. If they don't meet the preservation guidelines, we could take that to the full commission, and the commission can approve projects that don't meet the guidelines. But staff can't do that, and that's written into Article 6. We do work closely with, make, to find ways to help property owners make the budget work.
Okay. And what is the process of, what is the process of adding security features to CHAP, well, local businesses in like CHAP, CHAP areas? What is that process?
A couple of things on that. Those would be reviewed and approved by CHAP, but we, we are cognizant that, yes, we need to approve, you know, cameras, and we've also have approved gating and security grills and things like that. I won't say we don't want to, but we, we understand where we are-
Okay.
-and, and where historic preservation is. So, we work, we, we always try to work with the property owner to make sure that they get what they need, they, they get what they're trying to do, and meet the guidelines as best as possible.
Okay. That, that's actually really helpful to hear. There's been a business in my area that has been broken into three particular times. They have a large, beautiful window, and that window has been shattered on a number of occasions through burglary. And so, they've been having significant difficulty with adhering to the CHAP guidelines, but also protecting their businesses as well. And so, I'll definitely be reaching out to you again with some of the, those details, because I think that there needs to be some sort of discussion about that with the particular business owner, and also just maybe hopefully using this as a test case example of like hopeful revisement of codes in the future.
I look forward to your email. And, and also to say that we are, are moving forward with that revisions of the procedures and guidelines. And one of the things we want to do is to directly address those security issues and make sure that's in our guidelines.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director. I want to thank you and your team for all your hard work. One thing that I would ask you to consider is taking advantage of any opportunities that you and the staff may have, to be as proactive as possible with applicants in terms of, of providing guidance, and it's something we've talked about in the past. But to reduce kind of the back and forth, and I think on the economic development side, that would speed things up, and on the staff side, would, would help reduce your workload in terms of having to manage that back and forth with folks. So, anything you could do to consider that would be deeply appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Stokes?
I just want to thank CHAP. I know we had some hard decisions, and, and you kind of, got to give a little when you're talking with the community, because you see something there. And I just want to thank you for it being considered a community sometimes, because those decisions can be very hard. But CHAP, you have been, you know, able to work that out with the community. I want to thank y'all guys for it. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director. Appreciate the work that you all do. One of the challenges that we've been having is around external regulators with BG&E. I know that you are very familiar with this issue. It has raised an enormous amount of concern among folks in Fells Point, Washington Hill, Federal Hill, Patterson Park, Butchers Hill, and a couple other historic neighborhoods. I've been really- I've been really disappointed with the way that BG&E has behaved. It's felt to our communities like they were steamrolled, and there was very little consideration. There's, I'm not going to bore my colleagues or anyone in this room, but a long debate about whether the, having the external regulators outside of people's houses is safe or unsafe, but it felt like a situation where the community was not respected and where a private business that has a, essentially, a monopolistic contract with the city was able to do whatever they wanted to do. And so, I'm interested in whether, in a situation like that, CHAP has any kind of jurisdiction to be able to step in, push back, and force BG&E to consider some alternative options. I think that the community legitimately was concerned about safety and also the aesthetics of their neighborhood, and as well they should be. I mean, these are some of the oldest parts of the United States of America with a really proud history. So, wondering about that specific, and I know this is a little specific, but that specific issue and how CHAP can be an ally to our communities and to preservationists when these types of issues arise.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for that question. That has, that has been something that we've been struggling with, and the commission about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, did have a hearing on this, and they did determine that there was a safety issue. And then we went to the Public Service Commission, wrote them and asked them the same question, and they said, yes, it is a public safety issue. So, with that in mind, the commission did rule that, you know, we don't want to get in the way of public safety. Nevertheless, we do issue authorizations to proceeds. Usually, it's one authorization to proceed for several different addresses at a time, and we say, put them in the least obtrusive place possible. And there have been two or three times, there've been a couple in Federal Hill, that we have contacted BG&E and said, this, this is awful, you guys could put this in better. But we haven't been able to actually prevent them from being put on the, on the outside and put on, and installed on the inside instead. I don't know if that would take city council ordinance, if that would take a state legislation to do something like that, but that's something else that we could talk about.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and again, you know, I understand the safety concerns. I've definitely heard it argued in both directions. In a lot of these neighborhoods, we see a lot of car accidents, and cars fairly frequently crash into homes, and of course, BG&E will argue that if it's inside, it's a much more catastrophic, it could be a much more catastrophic outcome if the thing explodes than if it's outside a house. But in any case, I appreciate that. I do feel, like I said, I think our communities feel really disappointed that BG&E didn't seem to want to come to the table in any kind of spirit of compromise, and I do wonder in these situations whether CHAP can be sort of a, bit of a neutral convener, if you will. I think that as an elected representative, I'm always going to represent my folks unless they're wrong. But, you know, our job is to represent our constituencies, but I think with CHAP, you all are in a somewhat unique space in that you're sort of the arbiter of what's considered historic and what's not. And I do think these houses are truly historic, and so, I wonder if in this case, there's any baseball left to play, and in future situations that we get into, whether CHAP could step in and at least try to broker something, because I ended up playing that role, but, you know, it, BG, at the end of the day, did what they were going to do.
One of the things that BG&E told me they were going to do, or some folks from BG told me they were going to do, is to try to create a couple of products for screening of that, to try to, you know, gussy up, to put lipstick on the pig, so to speak. But that is something that we can, we can push for, and if you want to talk offline, maybe we can brainstorm to see if something comes up.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, and again, appreciate your work. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Were you talking about regulators?
Yes, sir.
My ears perked up. I know that Senate President Ferguson's office had been working with BG and the PSC on it, and I apologize if Councilman Cohen and you covered this in your response, but what's, what's next steps in terms of this whole saga?
I believe, well...
From your perspective, recognizing you don't have the authority to fix this problem.
I think what would fix this problem would be state legislation.
State legislation?
Yeah.
Okay. Bring that back to the, to the delegation. Too bad we don't have anyone here from the delegation right now. All right, Councilman Stokes.
Real quick, y'all talking about them regulators, it's perked up my ears, too. It doesn't have nothing to do with your house, whether it's historic or not. In some communities, they put the regulators inside the house. They tell some neighborhoods, it only can be outside the house. So, there's a lot of confusion out there. I get a lot of emails about this. Over in Washington Hill, they fighting it, so I don't know what you can do, I don't know what my delegate can do and find out what, is it inside or outside? Some say it can't be inside, and I know communities that have this inside. Then it goes, other communities say, no, it can't go inside, it only can be outside. So, there's a lot of confusion out there that probably for the community to understand that need to be cleared up a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else on regulators? Very good. Director Ryer, thank you to you and your team. Want to give a, this is, I think this is my first time meeting you, Assistant Director Stewart, but you're just fantastic. Also want to give a special thanks to Assistant Director Smith, who is phenomenal, and Mr. Tezo, who I deal with on a daily, if not hourly, basis, and provides incredible support to the Planning Commission. Deeply appreciate his efforts, as well as Mr. Holcomb, and Chad Hayes, who's been doing a phenomenal knockout job in central West Baltimore and Upton and Dreward Heights on my area of the world. Really appreciate it. Thank you all. We are not going to go into recess, we're just going to call Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and have a great day. Oh, hang tight, one second. I think it's about regulators. Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure I have one request on the record for the Mayor's Office and for the public. This is related to the conservative districts, conservatory districts. I just want to be frank and reiterate my monthly meeting with planning. I want to have a meeting with Housing and Community Development to discuss how do we implement this. Also want to make sure that when we move forward, that we do not do anything disjointed again with having conversations with community, and I say this as representing communities of color. While we may think tax credits are great, we need to also put the money behind it for the resources, because capital is not expendable, nor is it equally accessible to black communities. I just want to be frank, but I want to make sure we have this conversation. Yes, CHAP credits are great. However, we need to help our middle-income black neighbors have access to the funds to actually do the work as well. So, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, as well as with Finance and others, how do we create a tax credit, but also incentives to help people get there. So, I would like that by July 30th. A meeting with Commissioner Kennedy, Mr. Holcomb, Director of Planning, as well as the Finance Department to discuss this, because if we're going to create a package, it needs to be holistic. Thank you.
CP's office, Mayor's office, you guys got that? Thank you. Thank you all very much. Have a great day. We'll be in here if you need us.